I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for a invocation by Tina LeBlanc.
Good evening. When I thought about what I wanted to say today, tonight, I thought I'd talk a little bit about mental illness and its place in society and how people still feel stigmatized living with a mental illness. But we should be there for those people in our community, our students in particular. And I was doing some research and I found a quote by Kate Middleton. "A child's mental health is just as important as their physical health and deserves the same quality of support. No one would feel embarrassed about seeking help for a child if they broke their arm, and we really should be equally ready to support a child coping with emotional difficulties." And I think that that hits right on the mark with everything that children are faced with in today's society as well as adults. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Fire evacuation notice, if the case of emergency, there is the exit to the rear of the chambers out to the parking lot, or you can exit my left, your right, and then take your foot's left down the stairs to the rear parking lot. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Here. Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Vanyay?
Yeah.
Mrs. DePoe?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Chairman Crisell?
Here. Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. Board guests, Mr. Superintendent Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first guest tonight, we have from Enfield High School teacher Anthony Allegro and some of his students from the Community Action Learning Class. Some of you may have read an article last month about some of the fantastic work that these kids have done, so we asked them to come to be our invited guests tonight, and I won't do him any justice if I try to explain what they did. So at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Allegro, and I see Mr. Siney here, I'm not sure if he's coming up or not, but if they'd like to come up and address the board.
All right.
We don't fight, so just promise.
We gotta press the button.
Press.
It's already, yeah.
It's already on.
Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate being guests tonight. I think I just want to speak on behalf of the students. This is our pilot year of the course, and so this first semester is the first time we've actually experienced this. So they're my guinea pigs, so to speak, but they did a tremendous, tremendous job. It was hard work. It's very, very different. It's a very non-traditional classroom setting. These guys pretty much organized themselves from the beginning of the year as we use a model as like a nonprofit organization. So we had president, a treasurer, a secretary, and they come up with a design for the course is based on a community project that we have to do by the end of the semester. The first quarter of the school year, they put out a series of proposals that they would like to do for projects. They came up with about five, and then they had to pitch their proposals to me and other staff members. And then we voted on which one we think was the most powerful presentation that they gave. So that one ended up being we did some community work to raise money and toys to donate to CCMC to long-term patients that were going to be in the hospital over the holiday break. And they raised in just 18 days over $2,000. $1,800 in monetary donations from town and over about $400 worth of toys. So what they did was really, really extraordinary. And then we were actually lucky enough to have the patch cover our story, which was great. And the community got to hear about what we did, and I'm so very proud of these guys here. And I'd like to say thank you to Central Office, Mr. Siney in the back there. We wrote this course over the summertime, and last year we were nominated, or we won the award for Red, White, and Blue High School of the Year for our civic engagement. And we are considered a model high school for that. And this just shows we're willing to take risks in our district to have new courses like this, and let me tell you, it's paying off so, so much. These kids had a great opportunity this semester, and they did extremely well. We're all very proud of them. We'll take any questions as well.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Neville?
Not a question. I just tell you how proud, we're so proud of you guys, okay? It's good to take risks. You know, they make a difference and to get something done like this, and when you step in and you help those that need it in a community like this, wow. And you did it so quickly, you did it so well. That makes it worthwhile for us to be on this board to have people like you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any others? Ms. Riley?
So just, is there more than just the five students in there?
Yes, there is 18 students altogether.
Oh, great. You guys are phenomenal. Thank you so much. It's really tough to get something together to raise funds for a regular, let alone students doing it their pilot year. That's awesome. You guys did a great job. Keep it up. So proud.
Ms. Hernandez?
Hey. So I could not be more thrilled to hear about this program and the work that you did. Something that's really interesting and we talk a lot about is that we don't always just want our grades to define us, but these types of courses are what define you. And you got soft skills, so working with people, organizing, but you also got the hard skills of going out there and getting experience. So when I read about this course, like I'm even getting pink cheeks just thinking about it. I love hearing about these kind of opportunities. And these are the things that make you interesting. Like if you have, if you would like to go to college, whatever your next step is, college, service, going straight into the workforce, these are the things that you can talk about. And so I'm so proud of you that you took a risk. This was the first year, so you put a lot of faith in your instructor and keep doing this amazing work. Thank you so much for making us proud.
Ms. LeBlanc.
Mr. Allegro and Mr. Siney, this is exactly what we were hoping for with the new high school, new opportunities and new ideas. And, you know, I feel, you know, you have that opportunity with the support of Central Office and certainly the Board of Education. As for the students, like Sarah said, today, when you apply for a job or you're going to apply for college, they're looking for well-rounded students. And what you did not only was well-rounded, but very compassionate and very heartfelt. And it probably made a bigger difference to the patients that received it, which made it even bigger difference to you that you could touch some people to that level. So I appreciate your involvement and thank you very much for doing this and your time and effort, and thank you for coming tonight.
Mr. Poe.
So I also would like to thank you guys for taking a leap of faith and trying a new class and, you know, for all of your efforts as well in getting this course off the ground. It's very inspiring and very exciting. So not to put anyone on the spot, but I would kind of like to know if any of the five of you could share something that you felt was maybe one of the biggest lessons or something that you walked away from this class knowing that you didn't before, or something that you value that you're taking away. I'd like to see what you guys think.
Don't rush to the microphone.
Where? Ah, there it is. It's hiding on me. Thank you. There you go.
So I'm one of those people where I have really bad social anxiety, and this definitely put me out of my comfort zone working with a lot of people. And, you know, and just having this community inside of a classroom definitely like helped me develop myself as a person. And that was like one, like honestly, it was like one of those heartfelt things for me personally, besides like of course helping those in, like, you know, who can't go home for the holidays. So, yeah, basically, like, you know, if it weren't for these guys, I don't know where I would be as a person right now.
I love that. Thank you.
Anyone else? You sure? Quite talking in the classroom, huh? All right.
Just like going in and being able to like work with all of my classmates to accomplish a goal and not just being taught something and have to write it down on a paper. We actually like did something and got to help people like almost all on our own, and we did it working together. And that's what I...
Anyone else? You sure? And I just, I just want to say too, the way the class is designed, once they get going, this is all them. This is 100% the students. So from organizing and everything, they just, I'm there to tell them, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Or when they make a phone call and someone says, sorry, we can't make a donation, to say, hey, it's all right, we'll just make another phone call, keep on going. So all the accolades are all for these guys, 100%. They did a great job.
Mr. Ryder.
I had two quick questions. This was last semester's project. So are you already working on brainstorming for the upcoming semester's project? And will it be something similar? Will there be a fundraising element, a gift at the end, et cetera?
So that's a great question. So these guys, I actually don't have them in class anymore, teardrop, but we have a brand-new semester of kids around the same size, about 17 or 18 kids in the class so far. So what, right now, what they're learning is organizational skills and how to work as a group. We go over stuff like Robert's Rules, how to run, how to create an agenda, how to have a board meeting, and they start doing those things on a regular basis. And then they come up with a brand, so every semester is a brand-new project, a different project. So they'll research things that they might be interested in doing, whether it's fundraisers or raising awareness for something. It could be anything that benefits any kind of community, any group of people. To better the lives of others is really what we're all about. So one of the greatest things about this course is you could take it more than once because, say you take your freshman year, it could be one project, and then you could take it again your senior year if you have extra electives that you need to fill in your schedule. You could take it again because it's a whole different course, but the same basic principles we try to learn. Yep.
Mr. Neville, again?
One quick thing, I'm just thinking, you set the bar so high for this first semester. Yeah, I can hardly wait to see what you do with the next group does. I mean, you've done a great job, but it is a high bar, guys. You set it. Nice job.
Very well done.
Well, on behalf of the boards, thank you very much. You did it. You guys are rock stars. Thank you for the money you raised, and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate it.
Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add, Mr. Allegro is a little bit too modest, but when I first reached out to him to come when the article was published, he got back to me with about 30 seconds and said, yeah, absolutely, but can I bring the kids? So we were able to schedule for this week, so we thank him and all of the students for coming tonight.
Thank you to the patch for covering that too.
Our next guest tonight, we welcome the Enfield Foundation for Excellence in Education, otherwise known as EFE, and member, well, one member, Elizabeth Windsor-Post. Ms. Post is going to come and describe EFE's mission to support innovation, innovative activities and programs that enhance education for the benefit of the children of Enfield, and I won't steal any more of her thunder, so I welcome Ms. Windsor-Post.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Elizabeth Post, nice to see you. Hello, everybody. You guys were awesome.
You may want it.
I'm really glad you guys are going to stay.
You want to grab that mic?
Oh, really?
Yeah, because...
She's used to being, she's used to projecting. That's why she was not even...
You won't be on TV. This is...
That's my other job. All right, we're waiting for this to go. Hello, I'm Beth Windsor-Post. I am so glad to see your innovative project and service learning project, and I ask you all to stay for an extra 15 because we might be able to help you all out. I am the president this year for EFE, the Enfield Foundation for Excellence in Education. In the next 15 minutes or so, I'll hope to keep it shorter, I'm going to tell you about where we came from, what we do, how we do it, and what we need to move forward. Okay? Enfield Foundation for Excellence in Education, EFE was founded in 2009. Shannon Grant and Maureen Brennan were instrumental. They were parents of students here in the Enfield Public Schools, and they decided that what we really needed was to support our education by providing funding for innovative projects, classroom projects, district-wide pilot programs, and so forth. Since 2009, EFE, oh, well, here's our mission, to support innovative activities. Now, we all have different definitions of what innovative is. This is innovative, what y'all just saw. Inspiring, inspired educators like the gentleman over here, thank you for what you're doing. This is why we do what we do. We have given over $30,000 to Enfield classrooms and teachers since 2009. We've done things like funded the Invention Convention to come back to Enfield. We actually, it was part of the curriculum for one year. It is now a continuing after-school program. Hundreds of our students have gone to state competitions. We've also done things like the Sea Perch Program, which is kind of the underwater robotics program, as well as just this last semester, we funded programs for first-grade scientists over at Bernard School. We helped fund a year ago at the new high school their literacy lab. So what we do, how we do it, is we provide grants. We have on our website, we have a very simple grant application, including the rubric. We have two grant cycles a year, one in the fall, one in the spring. Our fall grant cycle tends to be a little bigger because teachers are getting to know their students, getting to know their needs, and seeking funding for the projects that they would like to do to supplement our regular curriculum. Here's an example of something we funded. This is at JFK. These are murals and artwork that, if you've been to JFK, you've seen them. This is the Invention Convention, which was one of our big successes. We were very happy to do that. This is actually where you all come in. This Run For Your Lives, we've done this, we did it for two years, and we would like to get to do this again and make this a continuing fundraiser, family project for EFE. A student at JFK about five years ago wrote this grant as part of the Gifted and Talented Program and implemented it, and we actually ran it for a couple of years. So, see how this all ties in so nicely? I love it. We do grants, classroom grants, they can benefit single classrooms. We love to fund grants that not just single classrooms, but actually do whole grade levels. Bigger bang for your buck. We have an excellent example of that going on over at Prudence Crandall. We have two teachers from two different grade levels, went together for a training in Chicago, came back, wrote a grant to get the materials, and now it has spread all the way through Prudence Crandall School. So when we can provide funding that gets great results and can spread throughout our schools, that's what we like to do. So here's more convention. This student, for example, if you go back to the Invention Convention, I don't know if you've ever heard of Annabemus, but Annabemus is our little superstar who got national attention for her invention when she was a fourth grader, that's her American Girl Doll, who she designed a backpack for to keep her insulin cold because her choice was, do I carry my doll, do I carry my insulin? So she designed that, actually, yeah, there was actually talk of her going on to Ellen. Don't know what happened with that, but it was pretty cool. Yeah. Scholarships. One year, we were able actually to fund scholarships for students both from Fermi and from Enfield High. This is something that moving forward, we would like to, if we could just expand EFE and have more financial backing, this is something that is very important for us, to fund continuing education for our students moving on. So, community involvement, things we have done. Some of you remember Enfield Idol. We did that for three years. That was a big fundraising thing that we did. One of our continuing resource streams, and this is what I was hoping to talk to you guys about, we have 36 teachers in the district who have $1 out of every paycheck come to EFE. And it is a continuing resource stream that we would very much love to pursue because all of these dollars go straight back into our school system. And to have teachers and administrators actually help fund this program would be wonderful. We actually, we have two people who work for companies in the area that do matching through United Way. That is something else we would love to expand. Again, the more we get, the more we give. Fourth of July Parade. Our most recent grants, we funded five different grants this fall. There were two grants for Bernard School, two at Prudence Crandall, and this was the very first year we had an applicant from the Kreck PSA, and they funded that project as well. So it's wonderful that we have had participation from all of our schools over time. What, the two schools we would like to include would be our parochial schools because we serve all of Enfield. Upcoming events. If you all get or see the Enfield Today Show on our local station, you will see that Shannon Grant and my husband, Matthew Post, recorded on January 29th about EFE. So if you go on to the Enfield Today Show, that's what's playing this month. The Country Diner has very generously offered to partner with us in two weeks. It's going to be Thursday night, March 2nd. We are having an open house, community open house, meet and greet, come meet some of our teachers, come see some of the grants, come sign on to be part of EFE. And that's going to be Thursday, March 2nd, at Country Diner from 6:30 to 8:30. And our spring grant cycle closes March 15th. So we will be voting on those new grants and funding those by the end of March. Here's what we need. We need people. We need people. We really need people. We have a very committed, small core of people who have been with EFE for a few years, but there's not enough of us to do the fundraising, to do the community outreach, to do the business partnerships, to grow EFE to be what Enfield is going to need it to be in the coming years. So I'm asking, please, if you can't come to the Country Diner in two weeks, tell your friends, tell your family, go to the EFE website, which is at www.efeofenfield.org. Come and see us, join us, be part of us. I know everybody cares about our kids, our education. Enfield knows how important education is, and we need to be able to give back and support the highest-quality education. We're here, we need help because that's what we want to do. That's all I got. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. It was nice to be here. I'm sure you have questions, and I'm all yours.
Before I throw it out, can you confirm that date? Because March 1st is a Thursday, not March 2nd.
Okay, then it's March 1st. It's Thursday.
All right, so it is March 1st.
Thank you.
Okay. I just checked my calendar.
You were right.
Didn't sound right.
Because the second I'm leaving town. Okay, March 1st.
Well, I want to make sure that people know, it's March 1st.
March 1st, Thursday.
Thursday, March 1st.
You are the best.
So now I'm opening it up to questions. Mr. Rutledge?
Good evening. First of all, thank you for everything you do. A lot of people up here agree, but anytime we can get community involvement in helping our educational system, it's, wow, you know, it's definitely appreciated. I'm guessing on your website is a donation portal, if I remember correctly?
Yes.
Great. And was there, is that Country Diner event, is that a fundraising event, just so we know?
I will definitely pass the hat, but this is more to get people. I will never turn down a dime for EFE. But our real need is people to help. We have so few people that right now, you know, to get everything done we need to do, that's, I really would appreciate money, but I need bodies more.
Very good. Well, keep up the good work and thank you for everything you do.
Thanks.
Mr. Neville?
You're a good spokesman, Beth, you did a good job here.
Thanks.
Full of enthusiasm. I know about EFE because we're here. Like some other groups, like Kite and things like that, I think it's very important that you guys come before us on an annual basis. And so through the chair, to the superintendent, if we can somehow annually have you come and kind of bring us up to date. You've got a TV audience here, and apparently a lot of people watch it. I think it's a good place to get your information out there. Secondly, I don't hear anything about your fundraising, and I'm all over town, so I, I'm not putting anybody down, I'm just saying, we need to get that out to all of us so that, you know, I'd give you a buck a week towards this, it's easy, okay? But, you know, I didn't know that we were even doing that, okay? Things like that. And so I think we need to get more publicity out there. So I give you a challenge. I'll help you, but I'll give you a challenge.
That would be wonderful.
But I think you need to do that.
Well, we actually have a new liaison member, Mr. Ryder.
He's a good media guy. He can help you out here.
He is. I didn't want to task him too much, but he's the reason I'm here tonight because he's the one that got us, got me on the agenda. So thank you, Scott.
Do you have a fundraising goal for the year?
No.
Okay.
We need, we need people more than anything because I can't, we can't do it...
Okay, no, I think you need, my suggestion, you'd have to get both, but, you know, however you do that, but I just, the goal would, I've been to several others. My son works in Glastonbury, they have a huge...
Yes.
...thing there, and, you know, and he's applied for grants there, and it's a, you know, I mean, they're big bucks. I've gone to a fundraiser in summers for theirs.
Right.
And, you know, and that was very, very productive too. So, I mean, they're around us, and I think the more that we can get people, the more we can raise the money, the more we can get back to...
Exactly.
...our community and then kind of combine them. So call me if you need my help. I'd be happy to donate, and let's see where it goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Hello. It's really nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
I just, so you need people. What do you need people for?
We need people. Everybody has a strength to bring. My particular strength is enthusiasm and getting out the message, but also in teaching the grant-writing process. So that would be my expertise. There are people with expertise in, like Tim said, in fundraising and in reaching out and having those relationships with businesses. So what we're looking for is come and let's identify what is your strength and what can you add to our group? Because everybody is going to bring something. But we have a very small group of people right now that are active. We actually, you know, have a lot of members that have gone on to do things like fund Kite and First Readers, and God bless them for doing that, you know? But we have the need, so if we can get people that have those community relationships that then, that could actually help us meet our goals.
And when do you meet? And how often?
We meet the second Monday of every month, and then we have special meetings with the grants. So our grant, like I said, the grants close on March 15th. So immediately after that, within a day or two, we will have a meeting, and we could certainly put that out, and people can actually come. The grants are all redacted, so they, it's a blind grant process. And so, and we grade using the rubric based on innovation of idea, based on number of students benefiting, all of that. So if anybody wants to come and see what a grant looks like and how the decisions are made, that would be open to anybody who would be interested. So I would be, I would love to have people come.
Well, thank you very much for coming between, you know, seeing, you know, what Mr. Allegro and the students did at Enfield High, and then having someone as involved in EFE. It just really makes you proud to be a resident of Enfield, so thank you for all your hard work.
Ms. Riley?
Do you think that you could send us like an email reminder, when are you going to do that grant meeting that you have?
Sure. Would that interest you?
Yeah, it would definitely interest me.
Absolutely. I would be happy to do that.
Cool. Perfect. And are you going to also be doing the teacher appreciation thing this year again?
Yes. Teacher appreciation is one of our, the teacher appreciation, there's one, Tim. We do teacher appreciation every year. We've been doing once a year with the Blue Sky... We've been doing, once a year, with the Blue Skies Big Band. We've been doing benefit concerts with them. But, you're right, we would love to be able to expand our fundraising.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Why don't you just add us to your email list?
Okay.
And just send it to us. I mean, it's, you know, that's okay with the chair? We can
Yes, that's fine.
And let us know about your meetings.
Is that all right?
Okay.
Great.
It's a good thing it's not on, like, Wednesday, Tuesday, or Thursday, because those are all booked up for everybody.
Right now, I have Sunday.
We'll just add Mondays.
We must have found the only empty day here, you know? Keep up the good work, Beth.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We will assist you any way we can. And again, just give them the website again, if you
Oh, it's www.effievnfield.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I don't want to kill your computer.
Sure, go ahead. So, next up on the agenda is number seven, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Drezek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both our student reps are here, so.
Why don't we start with Sarah?
First, I'd like to congratulate the dance team. They just had a dance competition in Fairfield, Connecticut, on February 10th, and they placed third place in jazz and hip-hop. And they also made states, and their next competition is in Hamden on February 24th. Then lastly, I'd like to talk about the program of Studies Night. It's next Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM in the Enfield High Auditorium.
Thank you, Sarah. And Jaclyn, right?
Hello. I'd first like to congratulate Enfield High's wrestling team. They won the CCC East Championship, which means they won all of their meets and went undefeated throughout their entire season. I'd also like to congratulate the girls' basketball team, who also made states. The honors chorus and the treble choir will be performing their winter concert Thursday, 6:00 PM, at Enfield High School. That's about it.
Thank you. Mr. Drezek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a reminder of President's Day and staff professional development. Schools and offices will be closed on February 19th for President's Day, and all K-12s students will have February 20th off for our certified staff members to attend full-day professional development activities. It's a reminder that Enfield Public Schools will host its biannual Heritage Fair on Saturday, February 24th, from 11:30 AM to 4:00 PM at John Kennedy Middle School. And closing your packet is a flyer with additional information, and there's also information on the board's website. Snow days. As of today, okay, I'm going to need the board to take action, to make a motion that you don't allow it to snow for the remainder of the school year. My kids are sick of hearing me at 4:00 in the morning rumbling around. More importantly, I wanted to give you an update on where we stood with regards to the last day of school. So as it stands right now, the 181st school day, for all students, with the exception of those who attend JFK, is Friday, June 22nd. Now, as you know, the firm graduation date is Thursday, June 21st. So what it means as it stands today, the board has three options when it comes to dealing with graduating seniors from Enfield High School. Seniors would graduate on Thursday, the 21st. To stick to the board's policy of 181 school days for all students, you can either, A, make the seniors come back the following day. You can, B, do what we've done in the past when we've run into snow day issues. We did this at Fermi a few years ago, because all the students attended Safe Grab, and as the Safe Grab buses came back in at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, I don't remember what time, but I know we had a breakfast for the students as they got off the bus, and in the cafeteria, we handed out the diplomas. Or the third option would be, the board has the right to waive that 181st day because state law requires that students attend 180 days of actual student time. So those are your three options at the moment when it comes to seniors at Enfield High School. I would caution you about doing anything at this point in time, because it's February 13th, I believe, and I can't predict what's going to happen tonight with regards to weather, let alone for the next month and a half.
Nor can the weathermen, too.
Nor can any meteorologists that we're in contact with. While we're on the subject of additional days, if all things remain true and there were no additional snow days, all students, again, like I said, with the exception of JFK, the 181st day would be on June 22nd. As you know, JFK has an additional snow day because of the boiler issue. So the last, the 181st day for JFK students is slated right now to be June 25th, which is a Monday. So the JFK students only would have to return on Monday. Now, you as a board do have the option as well for JFK students to waive the 181st day, so that way, all students would get out on June 22nd, and then whatever you decided to do with the seniors at Enfield High School as well. I would caution doing anything except the following. I think it's prudent if the board wishes to give the families of JFK and the faculty and staff, and most importantly, the students at JFK, some notification that you're, if you are willing to waive that 181st day for them, regardless of where it falls, whether it be the 25th, or if we have more snow days built in, they would still be required to come back an additional day. The board has the right to waive that now, and the days will fall depending upon the weather for the remainder of the year, if you choose to do that. As far as making the determination with seniors, that's not something you need to do at the moment. Unfortunately, you're going to get an update every two weeks and maybe more than that, depending upon snow days. But as it stands, if you were to waive the 181st day for JFK students only, that leaves us five remaining snow days to get us to June 29th. As you know, state law doesn't allow us to go beyond June 29th. You can't go to school in July. So after we hit that fifth additional day, we now eat into April vacation. And traditionally, when the board has required to go on April vacation, you would start on the first day and then work your way down. So if you go beyond five days from this point forward, April 9th, which is a Monday, would be the first day that we would have to call kids back and cut their vacation short. So the action tonight, if the board chooses, that you can take a vote to waive the 181st day for JFK families. If you were going to ask me for my recommendation, that would be it, just to put people's and families' minds at ease as to wanting to know when it is that their kids are going to actually get out. I know staff is trying to plan for those days as well. And I know there's some anxiety with regards to some students about having to come back that extra day when siblings and classmates don't have to. As far as the other decisions, you don't need to make those at this moment.
If we do that tonight, we have to suspend the rules to add that to the agenda?
That's what, do it now or wait till new business? Do it in new business?
You have to wait till new business.
Okay, so we'll wait till new business, and we will add that in the new business.
Looking at the nodding of the heads, it seems there's a consensus to do it.
Yes.
Because we've been here before. Thank you.
And so we'll do that in new business. Okay, so that's the, so that's these.
Any other questions on, and just to add, I did see your message on my way over, Mr. Rutledge, and that was probably apropos time to ask, Mr. Rutledge had asked about what the decision-making process was that goes into calling a snow day. And just so the board's aware, it's not something that I just look out the window and say, I don't feel like sending people in for the day. We actually consult with numerous people throughout the mornings, starting about quarter to 4:00 in the morning, or sometimes even previous evening, depending upon the forecast. We also have a meteorologist that all the local superintendents are in contact with. I say that because our, the guy that we use was actually on Channel 30, 30, the morning of the last snowstorm. And he also doesn't just predict the weather, but has a more accurate prediction on timing and road conditions, and also specifies for school closings. So the group of us will start getting emails probably the day before with an impending storm, including with the forecast. We also have emergency management, which gives us as much accurate, as well as the state's meteorologist that gives us information with regards to school closings. And at that point, we also have a conversation with, right now, I believe there's 13 of us that get a phone call at 4:30 on potential weather days, just to make sure that we're speaking with each other. I know I speak a lot with Ellington, East Windsor in summers, because a lot of our buses are coming from very similar areas. In addition to that, we also consult with the DPW. Mark Gar is sick of hearing me call him at 4:00 in the morning, but they'll give me, I'll give them a call to find out, to get with the road, an update on the roads. And also, we consult with, most importantly, the folks at Smith Bus. Jessie McCruel at Smith Bus actually goes in about 4:00 in the morning, and she drives around towns in the tradition of Mr. Smith. And she'll actually check the side roads for us to see how they are. There'll be times where I'll call her, and she'll say, "Well, the turns might be a little tight, but I think we can make it." But the underlying decision is not necessarily, we don't want to send kids out, and the roads might be dangerous, but safety is our first and foremost priority, is making sure that the kids are not in the buses, and transportation is not only is factoring into the safety decision, but there's also the aspect of, we have, not only do we have walkers, and sometimes in a snowstorm, but depending upon timing, sidewalks aren't cleared. And we also have students who can walk up to a mile and a half to get to their bus stop. So you don't have to take into consideration just the temperature of the, I don't use Snow Monster. I don't know where that came from, has nothing to do with me. If they're listening, no, I don't call Snow Monster. But we also have to take into consideration the temperature that kids might be waiting for a bus, the conditions for kids to get to a bus stop, as well as the kids who walk to school. So, it just was perfect timing to answer your question. I could follow up as well later, if need be. February events, there's listed below in your packet, the list of February events. I have a couple of things that aren't on here. I was notified early this week that we had applied for a state reimbursement grant for security measures that we've taken over time. We were notified by the State Department of Education that the check was actually cut. So Enfield received $313,000 of a reimbursement grant. That was in partnership with the town of Enfield. The town funded a lot of the projects, but the way the state works, we have to actually apply for the grant to get reimbursed for it. So our staff put the time and the effort in to do the reimbursement for it, so the town got a nice little, I think, unexpected bonus check this past week that we all can use. And then lastly, I'm going to pass this out. At the last board meeting
Jaclyn, pass this out.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, Mr. Neville mentioned some material that he had received from CAPE. So I had an opportunity to speak with Rob Raider, who's the executive director of CAPE. He forwarded me over just the condensed version of their 2018 legislative priorities. Now, it's not uncommon for boards of ed to read the CAPE priorities, digest them, and realize if this is something that you feel as a group you would like to formally endorse. Certainly, CAPE would welcome that, and we can do that, and we don't have to do it this evening. I just wanted to pass that out so you have an opportunity to see what CAPE's priorities are. I certainly have discussions, and you can call me in anytime if you have any questions regarding them. And if, at some point in a future meeting, as we're getting into the legislative session, if it's something that the board feels strongly to take formal action on, even as much as a letter, and putting it on our letterhead and sending it down to CAPE, and they will then share it with the legislature. But I wanted to also put out that Mr. Raider offered, though we're grateful that the Enfield delegation will often come and address the board with our state representatives and state senator, CAPE also is our lobbying body for the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And within the organization, they also have a legislative team who functions as our lobbyists. Mr. Raider has offered, and if the board is willing, to send up CAPE's legislative body here to have a Q and A with the board about the legislative process. If that's something that you're interested in, I'd recommend it, only because you'll get a different perspective. It's not just your local representatives who are going to be telling you about what they're hearing and seeing in Hartford. It's also the legislative body who lobbies on behalf of all boards of ed in the state of Connecticut. So they're more than willing to come up, just a matter of me letting Mr. Raider know, and he'll be more than happy to send the delegative team up.
Consensus on that?
I'd love to see this.
So let's set that up, whatever their convenience, and whatever meeting they want to come to, let's set it up.
Perfect.
If we're going to bring them up here, I'd like us to kind of kick around some ideas that we've represented them, because they're going before them. And I know Tina brought up, I think I echoed it, the thing about the kindergarten age and things like that.
Yeah.
And some of you were here with those meetings. I'd like to bring those kinds of things up.
Definitely.
Come up with a list, maybe, of things that we could bring up to them.
All right, so review this, and if you want to, if you want to put some, you guys hash out some ideas, or we'll hash out some ideas and make a list.
Just something about some board, you can add to it and stuff like that.
Okay. Perfect.
And I'll reach out to Mr. Raider and get some dates.
And thank you again to staff for putting in that grant for security measures. That $313,000 is definitely welcome news, and help us out there, and hopefully the town will accept our donation.
I don't think they'll turn it.
I don't know if it's tax-free or whatever. So, are we all set? Mr. Superintendent.
That concludes Superintendent's Report. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any audiences? No audiences?
Yeah, always raising his hand.
Mr. Teacats, if you would like to come up? It's three minutes, three minutes only, and no personalities, and keep it clean.
Oh, now I got to change my script.
That's right. I should proofread it before you speak.
I do it off the cuff. Bob Teacats, Wouldn't Gate Circle. I'm really impressed by this school board. Chris Drezek, probably the best superintendent I've seen in the last 50 years in Enfield. He's involved in the schools, he gets around. Tim, if they had a Hall of Fame for school board members, you should be the first member. Really? That shocks you, doesn't it?
Makes my heart so beat about that.
Yeah, throughout my life, I, you know, there was a show called, I Led Three Lives. I probably led six lives doing different things. I got involved in an auto accident on August 21st, and I want to thank Walter for giving me rise home from meetings. I ended up at Yale, I'm in some longevity studies, I have a monitor. They call me, they adjust my medication. They ask me how long I want to live. I says 150 years. So, who knows? I want to break the record. But, you know, I worked at Pratt Whitney in the '70s, when everybody's complaining about the sound levels of airplanes. Worked in the Wilgoose Test Lab, trying to attenuate the sound. It was a new field. Nobody knew anything at the time. I worked at combustion engineering with nuclear power plants. I've done a lot of things. I got involved in a particular sport in the '60s. I accomplished, I broke world records and things like that. It's immaterial at this point. But I also got involved in projections and population. The bad news for Enfield, we're going to lose 10.5% of the population. We'll be down to 40,000. 3,000 of that population is in the prisons, and that's going to be part of the 40,000. In 2013, the population peaked in Connecticut. The governor put a block on all the vital statistics, wouldn't release them. So you have to get them to the underground. He didn't want people to know that the population was declining. There's been, there's a lawsuit pending in Superior Court. The demographers are trying to get the data. The state won't release it, but we can get the numbers through other means. Just to give you some statistics on what's happening in the state of Connecticut, 130 cities and towns, the death rate exceeds the birth rate. That's a problem. School enrollment declined in 144 towns from 2010 to 2015. Population will decline in 46 cities by 2025. The latest UConn report, which I peer-reviewed, it is 107 towns will decline in population by 2040. So things do not look good. And that doesn't include what happened with Mass Mutual, closing of one of the prisons. But they've been closing wings in the other ones. They closed about eight, eight to 10 prisons in the state of Connecticut. We had over 20,000 prisoners, we're down to 13. They're releasing them early. The recidivism rate is probably around 80 or 90%. These people are committing crimes that are being released. So it's a major problem. As far as our schools, we've got problems in all the elementary schools. The facility report showed that the elementary schools are in the worst shape. And if you... Just to get it, Walter, just give me a few minutes.
All right, one more.
Number one is Hazardville Memorial is in the worst condition. Enfield Street School, Crandall's number three. Number four is the police station. Number five is Barnard. Number six is Whitney. And number seven is Parkman. Where's JFK? JFK is way down on the list, 19th. That needs the least amount of work. I don't know why we're concentrating on JFK. Does need some work, like all the schools, all the buildings. They claim that Priority One Project is changing these desks, the ceiling tiles and the rugs in the town hall. What's wrong with them? So a lot of these projects that they have are things that we don't really need, it's just wants. So we have to separate the wants and the needs, because we have a lot of things that we have to get done. And there's a lot of unnecessary things that we're doing right now, and we have to just cut what we have and stop spending the money. And Chris, I know you guys are going to make Enfield great again, the town council too. So, you know, if we did JFK over, we could put Trump Towers over there. Yeah, change the name.
Thank you, Mr. Teacats. So, like, all audiences closed. Number nine, board member comments. Would you like to start? Mr. Blank?
I will echo one of the students that left, but yes, the wrestling team, we all have another flag to adorn our gym walls. I think that's great for them. It's a hard sport, it's not an easy sport. Also, congrats to the dance team. The program of study nights, actually, people are like, "Do I really need to go to that if my student's a freshman?" Yes, absolutely, 150%, you should be there. It's a great night. I will be there. Also, some of the board members ordered the JFK hats, and I will have those to you guys soon. I went to the JFK PTO meeting last week. They are actively selling their hats, and their spirit wear will be beginning. They'll have a website, and you have two weeks to order any type of your JFK spirit wear. And that is all I have tonight, so thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you. First, before I get into some of the things that I've been able to attend, I want to say, you know, in, if you look at social media, if you talk to pretty much anybody, a common theme that we hear, and it's always said with a sigh, is, ugh, kids these days. And what I love about tonight is we had an opportunity to see kids these days. Kids these days in Enfield who are literally changing the world. And so I'm thrilled, again, with what we saw tonight. I had the privilege of going to the Head Start policy meeting, and they are moving and grooving over there. Hopefully, the flu hasn't set in too badly there, but there were a lot of sick kiddos, but the school nurse is on top of it. On March 13th, from 5:00 to 6:00, they have a STEAM and literature fair at Head Start, and the whole community is welcome. They are doing phenomenal work over at Head Start. And what I thought was really neat was they were talking about some of the handouts in the literature that they're sending home to parents, and some of the collaboration that they are doing with parents. And specifically, they said they were talking about promoting self-regulation and executive functioning skills. And I, that's just phenomenal. I mean, the respect that these teachers are giving to these tiny children as individuals. They are humans that need skill development and real... Just the level of attention that our teachers are giving over at Head Start, I was really impressed with. So it was a wonderful opportunity, and I look forward to, I have it down here, March 22nd, which is the next policy meeting. So, thank you.
Just a couple of things. One, this thing here, I think, is very, very important for us to get behind it. I mean, going through these things, they're things we've been talking about for years. And if we can support them, at least with a letter of support, I think it would be great. So please think about that as we go along here. It might be nice if they come and speak to us, that we do it that night and approve it. That'd be kind of interesting. The second thing, we've been, a lot of people have been chatting, we had to postpone our curriculum meeting because of ICE or something, or whatever night that was. But the, in terms of the programs that are out there, I mean, echoing some of the things you said, you know, and I applaud the superintendent for getting these people before us, because it gets out to a wider audience than just the nine of us. But I think we've got to showcase the good things. When people start talking about, oh, these kids today, you know, they just don't see all the other kids that we see and that we know here and the good things that go on there. So we've got to keep doing that. Speaking of that, had a discussion about talented and gifted, okay? And Tina and I served on the committee when we had that big bequest, and it took us, what, five years to finally get it through the courts and stuff like that. But we have some money that's put aside there for that, and that's a good thing. We also have that program that's partially funded through that, and I hadn't thought about it in a couple of years, and I'm saying, if new board members probably don't even know that much about it, and it would be good to bring them before us. I mean, I'm going to bring them, I'm going to ask Ms. Middleton to get them to, before the curriculum committee first, just to bring us up to speed. But I'd love to have them come out, along with a number of other programs, to educate the board about these good things that go on here. And I think the public probably doesn't know that much about that either, unless we kind of shout, give it a shout-out and put it out there. So through the chair, to the superintendent, if we can look at adding them to a list of groups that come before us sometime this spring.
It might be more beneficial to have them come later in the spring, and a part of, just to...
That's fine.
For the benefit of the audience, the Gift and Talented Program is 100% funded through the...
It is now?
It always was. That was part of the bequest. So there is no board funding that goes toward the program, and it's pretty specific as to who has to go in. But as part of the program, and Mr. Zwadniak will come up here and be more than willing to brag about the program, as he should, but part of the program, there is a completed project that the kids work on all year. And they have, they do have an event held over at JFK where the kids showcase their final projects. It might be a better idea to parlay that into actually coming to the board and presenting some of their projects. So I'll definitely put that out to them.
Very good. Thank you. Other than that, I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Mr. Rider.
Just to add to what Tina said about JFK and the spirit wear, we also shared that with the 3-5 PTO's, with the grade 3 through 5, because 5th graders coming in this fall, so they'd have an opportunity as well to get some spirit wear with September in mind. It also will help them with the fundraising, hopefully. But it's another batch of students that we could reach out to. The only other thing that I wanted to mention that was coming up is through Kite, and our partnership with Kite, there is a program called Parent Leadership Academy. Through the Parent Leadership Academy, there's an alumni team of former graduates that are doing a project annually, and this will be the eighth annual benefit for the Enfield Food Shelf called the Enfield Townwide Tag Sale. So if you go to Facebook and you visit Enfield, or sorry, search on Facebook, "Enfield Townwide Tag Sale," you'll see the Facebook page with all the information you'll need. Once again, we'll be mapping tag sales throughout the town. You get a map. Over the last four years, it's grown almost 200%. But the tag sale date is May 19th. It's rain or shine, from 9:00 to 3:00. And for a $25 fee, and every penny of that goes directly to the food shelf. You actually write your check to Enfield Food Shelf, but you send it to PLA, P.O. Box 83, Enfield, Connecticut, 06083. And if you have any questions, just reach out to the Facebook page, "Enfield Townwide Tag Sale," and they can help you out with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. Mr. Renier?
Thank you. The Hazardville Memorial PTO meeting was canceled by Mother Nature, so that did not occur last month, week.
Sure was the superintendent.
It was the storm beast, or whatever you call that thing. Mr. Chair, through you to the superintendent. Unfortunately, when I see this CAPE policy thing, there's a typo on the first word.
First letter.
It kills me. I'm like, what is this? Two Ts in the, just OCD on there. Thank you.
I didn't type it.
No, I know, I know. So, a couple of things. Talked a little bit about the security grant coming in, the town getting $300,000-ish. Talked a little bit about some funds and budgets. So, bear with me for a second. This line of reasoning does come to a conclusion. I love the Enfield Public School system. I love the staff and everyone who works for the school system. I love this board, all nine of us. I love the work that we do. I love the community that comes up to us and gives us such great ideas. I hate politics. I do. And I hate when we sit up at the dais and we listen to elected officials tell us that they're fighting for every dollar they can get us. And then you sit in a different meeting, and they go, "You know what? We should cut education in the town and move it to this part." Cut education. This board of education, the nine of us here and our predecessors, we have closed schools, we have consolidated K through 2. Our teachers have taken 0% increase. We've gotten two years, two years of zero for buses. And they have the audacity to come to the Board of Ed and say, "We need to cut them more?" That's ridiculous. And I want to make this statement, because budget season's coming up. And I want everyone in the town of Enfield to take a good look at who's voting for the budget. Who stays silent? Who speaks up at certain moments? Because it's going to happen. Because there are members of elected officials in this town that will say one thing to you and do the complete opposite, whether doors closed or when something is going against them. So to the town of Enfield and to everyone who's watching, I just want to say one thing. When it comes to the budget, Chris Dreszek has fought tooth and nail to give us a 1.8% increase, which clarifies the necessities that we need. Not a 5.7, not a 8.6, 1.8 off of necessities that we need, which will probably get cut So, to the town manager, to the town mayor, to Mike Ludwig, to the deputy mayor, Suzak, and to a select few members of the town council, I thank you for your fight to keep us at zero, when the governor came back and tried to take money away from us yet again, yet again. And there was voices of elected officials that wanted to take our money yet again, even though all the cuts that we've been making for our kids. So to the town of Enfield, budget season's coming up. Please watch it on YouTube if you can't make it out to the meeting. Ask your local officials, ask your public officials, your state reps, ask them what they think about our budget, ask them what they think about spending in education here in the town of Enfield. Because at this point, a couple months ago, we asked for an ECS grant. We asked what the state is funding us, and we have yet to get that. We have yet to get the formula that they approved in the last budget. Why is that? We don't have that in front of us. Yet we have to make these decisions and force to make... No, no. It stops here. We've done our due diligence. The town is doing their due diligence, and we need to work together. But stop undercutting us to these closed-door meetings and try to start taking money away from the town. Because this board has worked hard, the administration has worked hard, and dang it, the teachers have worked hard. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Renier. Mr. Poe, you can follow it up.
Yeah, so, mic drop for Rich. I unfortunately was not able to attend the Enfield Street PTO meeting yesterday, so I don't have their usual update, but I'll be finding out everything that happened and bringing it to the next meeting. I literally cannot follow that up, so I just want to, again, thank the guests that we had today and just express how pleased I am to hear some of the things that I have heard today, especially from the students in this new pilot class. You know, to have a student come up and tell you that taking a class at Enfield High has given them opportunities and helped them build skills and, you know, things that they really didn't think they could do, that is why we're here. That is what we look for every day, you know? These are the things that I hope everyone is hearing, that their children are getting out of our school system. So it's just, it's so inspiring, and it pleases me so much to hear something like that, and I can't wait to hear more. So, you know, bring it. I want to hear everything that's going on, and I'm really proud of everyone's efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Poe. Mr. Rutledge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, as a point of order, I'd like to speak before Rich going forward. Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Mr. Dreszek, for addressing my, you know, snow email. I will not call it "the snow monster," but, you know, given that I had received a lot of comments from parents, you know, concerned about, you know, how the snow days would impact vacations and things like that, I thought it would just be a good idea to put that information out there. Secondly, I just wanted to thank Principal Clark over at the high school. I met with her recently. She gave me a wonderful tour, again, of the facility, gave me a lot of information about the programs offered there, and it, just from what I saw, opportunity is there to be taken advantage of, if people want to take advantage of it. It's an amazing school. I've, you know, it was, I think, my second or third tour of it, but frankly, I wish I went to high school there, you know? I think I wish I could rewind myself 20 years and go to high school there with just all the opportunities. So, you know, just want to tell parents out there, opportunity is definitely available in our school system, and it's available to anybody that wants to take advantage of it. And on maybe a lighter note, just want to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day tomorrow. You know, enjoy spending it with your loved ones. I know in the past couple of years was, I think last year, you guys had a meeting on Valentine's Day, so at least we don't have to do that this week. And on a...
Guess you were on Fat Tuesdays.
And on a more personal note, I just want to say hi to my godmother, Virginia Petro, who just moved to town and is watching with my wife tonight on YouTube, so, hi.
Vice Chairman Riley.
I want to thank ETV, because I saw when Tina was talking at the very beginning of the meeting, I saw the email on the bottom. So that looked really cool, so if we can get it going the rest of the time, that'll be even sweeter.
The working process.
Yeah, hey, it's great, but it doesn't start, so we're good. First Reader's Trivia Night is Saturday, February 24th. It's an adults-only night. Doors open at 6:30. It starts at 7:00. Bring your own snacks and beverages. Greg Stokes is the emcee. There'll be prizes for each round. Spots are definitely filling up fast, which is awesome. And we want to thank everybody that has already purchased tickets and all of the generous people and businesses in Enfield that have donated to our prizes. Should be a really great time. Next is, I went to the Henry Barnard PTO meeting before here. They are having a vendor fair on March 24th. They, on March 24th, it's a Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They are in need of craft fair vendors, especially ones that sell kids-type crafts. If you're interested in being a vendor, you can sign up no later than March 10th. If you send an email to henrybarnardpto@gmail.com, and they can send you all the information. While I was there, I also got another flyer, which you're not going to be able to see, but it's a fundraiser for ERFC at Red Robin, and that is on February 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then I just wanted to take a minute to talk about budget. I wanted to thank the town council people that we have been working with, that have been speaking with us. So basically, the $2.3 million that ECS cut this current fiscal year from the state looks like it might not be a direct impact to us this year, since the town council might absorb that. And that's because our budget works differently, which is great, so we thank them for working with us. And we hope that we can have many more productive discussions with our town counselors to let them know how our budget works and hopefully come up to a good agreement for the next fiscal year. I also wanted to thank Mr. Dreszek for handling our expenses appropriately this budget cycle, and we thank you for being proactive with that. So now there's discussion of even more proposed cuts for the next fiscal year from the governor. I'd like to just ask the superintendent through the chairman, the $1.4 million that we were supposed to get back in ECS, looks like we might not get that now. And then possibly an additional 550, approximately $550,000 are going to be cut to that as well. So basically, $2 million less in next year's budget from ECS. So I just wanted to know, did you, did you have any inkling about that? Did you know about that? Did you put that assumption, you know, or make that into account when you did the next budget for us?
We don't, when I put our spending plan together, we don't factor in ECS, because that goes directly to the town, but the short answer is no. I found out the same day you did on the media. But we base it upon, you know, what our expenses are from year to year, and then the town manager incorporates that into his spending plan.
Gotcha. Cool. So, Rich, I definitely agree with the things that you said, and it's, you know, our teachers are doing an awesome job, and they put up with a lot, so hopefully we can keep everything, even Stephen. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for leaving me something to talk about. First, Rich, right on the money with that. As you guys don't know, but I do this every two weeks, I send an invitation to our governor to sit in that chair. So, the chair is free whenever you want to come, because fairness is, fairness, that's the new mantra from the governor, fairness. Well, fairness is, come here and tell us why you're cutting us. So, we'll leave it at that, because he'll probably cut us tomorrow. I did attend the signing ceremony at Enfield High, the two... I did attend the signing ceremony at Enfield High, the two students for the women's soccer. That was a great accomplishment by them, and just hearing all the things they do and all the sports they do is... But it, back to the high school thing, it happened during Eagle Hour, and it's amazing what those kids do during Eagle Hour. It's, you know, every, every spot in that school is being used by those kids, and it's just, it's just amazing to see. And I'm with you, I'd go back to high school in a heartbeat, but that's, I don't think they'd take me with my gray hair, so.
Just wear a hat.
I did also attend the Four Chaplains Mass over at St. Pat's this past weekend, and that's put on by the Machorik Post. That's a great organization that, again, is also dwindling in membership, so any current veterans from our current conflicts would like to give them a hand. They probably would take it, but it so happens that this year is the 75th anniversary of that torpedoing of the USS Dorchester and the Four Chaplains that went down with the ship. So that was a great service, and they've, like, the only ones in the state right now that are still carrying that honor and that service on, so. And Buzz Robotics has got a pasta supper also on March 1st at 5:00 over at the parish hall over at St. Bernard's Church on Hazard Ave. I don't know when it ends, but I know it starts at 5:00. And you mentioned the Red Rabbit. I want to put a shout-out to the marketing coordinator over there. I don't have her last name, her first name's Donna. She is, she is the godsend to this town. She, anytime somebody wants a fundraiser, she'll, she'll open, open the place up from 5:00 to 8:00 on, you know, usually Tuesdays or Wednesday nights, and she goes around and greets the people, and if anyone ever had the chance to go to Red Rabbit and, you know, get a decent meal and help out any organization that has a fundraiser there, that's, she does a great job, so we thank her for that. And that's about all I got. So we will continue now with unfinished business.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove from the table item A, Board of Ed Policy Number 9327.1. Put that back on the table for this evening.
So a motion to take it off the table, seconded by Mr. Neville. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Motion's off the table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, a quick little history on the motion, making a motion to pass Board of Ed Policy Number 9327.1, Board of Ed Member Use of Internet Social Networks, First Reading, and I will go into detail during comments.
Motion by Mr. Renier, seconded by Mr. Neville. Any discussions? Go ahead.
So this, this policy came through at the second meeting that this board had established. Couple of board members and some audience members had asked in regards to the use of board member social media. We had conferred with Mr. Longi, and we had touched base with our counterparts at CAPE and asked them if any such policy existed. CAPE took this from their archive of wonderful policies, sent it our way. Policy Committee did review this policy and brought it to you today.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Please, Ms. Hernandez.
First of all, thank you. As somebody who was part of that movement, or part of the request, I'm thrilled to see this. I do have a question, though, on number nine specifically. Now, it says, "Report immediately harassing or defamatory communications to the superintendent if they involve school officials, staff, students, or district business." And I would, I personally would like clarification on that, because is this things that are made by official staff, or if we see something being talked about with officials or staff? Because what I, I don't mind having these applied to me as far as my behavior and the things that I do, but I feel like, the way that I'm reading it, it's a line between policing other people and what they say, and certainly if something's threatening or if it involves the safety of our staff or any of our children, absolutely 100%, I would report that. But if I see a parent who has a concern and, you know, they're expressing their thoughts in a certain way, I don't want it to be necessarily my responsibility to take a screenshot and then, you know, go to central office to show that, because it's very subjective, like what, what, these terms are subjective to me. And so, yeah, I don't, that's where I would need a little bit of clarification, because I personally don't want to police and go through town forums and look at every single thing that somebody says and then be calling Mr. Longi and saying, "Oh, my goodness, did you see so-and-so said such?"
I will let Mr. Longi answer that.
Yeah, Ms. Hernandez, it's maybe not written as well as it could be, but this is for board members only, so...
Okay.
If you were to see a board member on social media that violated this, it's asking for other board members. We're not asking you to patrol social media...
Okay.
And if you see something from the public to tell us.
Okay.
We actually really don't want to know that, to be honest with you. It's really just to hold U9 accountable, is really what that's for.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Because I misunderstood. I appreciate it.
And it's also, when using social media as the public office, so none of us have access to the Facebook account that the school holds, so really, none of that really matters. So unless one of us had a separate Facebook account only for our duties here as a board member, this doesn't account to our personal email accounts or Facebook accounts.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Mr. Neville?
Your last statement kind of piqued my interest here, in terms of the, it doesn't apply to your, your personal account, because one of the things we can't do is conduct board business, or, going to your question, if I, if we were to talk about a case that went on here, oh, that exactly fits the thing. To say if I, as a board member, was commenting on something that happened here, or something that happened in executive session, something, any of those things, it would apply to my personal account.
Well, using your public official, so...
I don't have a public official Facebook account, though. I only have...
Well, no, if you had a Facebook account...
Yeah.
And you made mention of something that dealt with your duty as a Board of Ed member, then that's official business of the board. So it...
Okay, and I...
So you can use your own personal account, but if you start putting up there, like, this happened at school today, you know, this, this, that, and the other thing, or start making, you know, remarks about the school system yourself, like, oh, this school is, then that would be your public official, because then you're actually acting as a board member.
So it's really, it's really what I say and the role in which I was carrying it out, it doesn't matter which account it's on, whether it's, if it's, if I'm doing it on my wife's account, because I don't have an account, but if I did it on my wife's account and started answering questions as a board member, or started interpreting what people said, I know there's a big difference there between clarifying something that was said at the meeting, no, it's not on May 1st, it's on March 2nd, or whatever, you know, those kinds of things. But contributing to some of the discussions that I've seen, okay, in my mind, can only get you in trouble, okay? And it's, it almost makes me say, it reinforces the idea of why I don't have a Facebook account, okay? But I'm, I'm, I'm just, I was just curious about that last part of it. I just need to look at a couple of others here, just, I have a couple of other questions, but I lost my place. But go ahead.
Does anyone else want to ask a question? So we'll wait for Mr. Neville to... Go ahead, Mr. Ryder.
I just had a question about number 10, just because it ends with "when required to do so by the district's retention policy," and I didn't know what the district's retention policy was.
Actually, the state's, I think. Isn't it the state's retention policy? Generally, we're governed by that.
It's the state's. The state, the state runs the retention policy. It's dictated by state law.
You may want to change that, just that it's the state's record retention.
So we need to change the word district to state. All right, so we amended the policy.
Do we have to make a motion to amend?
Let's see what other, any other questions?
No, this is the First Reader. No, this is the First Reader, so he'll make the changes and then we'll approve it in the Second Reading correctly.
Can I?
Anything else?
Um, I have a question. No, it's okay, I just raised my hand. I have a question for clarification purposes on point number eight, similar to some of the other clarification questions that have been asked with respect to posting while in an official capacity. Where number eight says, "Conduct himself or herself online in a manner that reflects well in the district." What application does that have if the person in question is not posting anything remotely related to board business, Enfield Public Schools, but the behavior is unbecoming? You know, what, what is the consequence for that situation where the conversation has nothing at all to do with school systems issues, executive session issues? Jump in, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just would like to say, as being a veteran, I guess, on the board, and being active in social media, unlike our Hall of Famer, Tim, as far as I'm concerned, whenever anybody sees my name in any capacity on social media, I'm being related to a board member. Whether I'm posting something personal about my family or personal about something in my life, I've just always practiced that as long as I'm an elected Board of Ed member. That's how people know me, even if that's not what I'm posting about at that point in time.
And I think that's why I wanted to clarify the point, you know, about is there a difference when we're posting in our capacity as a board member or not? And just clarifying, you know, do these really apply when we're not, or do certain ones apply when we're not? And just so that both we and the public have a clear understanding of what expectations we've set for ourselves.
Personally, I would say probably for the last six years, I've always posted...
So how do we...
In the, in the sense that, you know, my friends will see me as friends, but other people in the community will see me as a board member, no matter what I'm posting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that however this is written...
Yes.
That is clear.
It's a hat you can't take off.
Right.
Who wants to go first? Ms. Ryder?
To your point, if you look up, underneath where it says "social networking websites" and then "code of ethics," that kind of, it says the importance of maintaining proper decorum.
Right.
And then in code of ethics, it goes on that you will refrain from, you know, inappropriate conduct and stuff like that, so it might not be in the numbers down below, but it's within the document, the policy.
All right, as long as it's clear, then I'm good.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Neville, you've...
I think we're looking at number one and number eight, because they, exactly what you were talking about, Charlotte, it's codified in number eight on this thing here, in terms of conduct yourself in a manner that reflects well on the board. So if we have a board member who's doing some things on, telling stories or whatever online on a Facebook, it doesn't really matter. As Tina said, and you said, we'd never take off that board hat, okay? And even though it says at number one, "clarify the communication is as an individual member of the board and not in the role of an official district spokesperson." I mean, we all understand that we're outside this room, meeting as, we're not meeting as a board. We have no authority, we don't have anything, but the public never understands that. And I don't know how, I've never, over seven years, I'd never figured out, they don't take Tim Neville, board member, or who was principal, whatever. I was never a citizen. So when people come up here and elected officials, and they say, "I'm here as a citizen," no, you're not. You're here as whatever title that you've been elected to, and that's how people will look at you. And I'd love to clarify it, I just don't know how to, because it's how people perceive that, and they don't, they don't see that distinction the way we do. And it's important to clarify it. The more I read this stuff, the more I think we should stay off Facebook when we're elected officials. I think Tina's right, okay? And I can show pictures of my grandkids, but that's about it, okay? It just, because it's, and when they start talking about things being a record, okay? You know, we had one case where we ended up with a, there was a court case, and people's, you know, I think Facebook accounts, email accounts, everything, where, you know, they would depose, and they had, and they were able to get all this stuff, because it's very, very hard to separate it, okay? And if I read this correctly, every email I send to somebody is FOI-able. If I send it to Rich to ask him a question about this thing, it's FOI-able. If I send it to Tina to ask a question about something here, it's FOI-able if the content, the substance of the content has something to do with what we do as elected officials. So it's very, very difficult to separate it out, and I don't want to get to the point where I'm going to get a subpoena for my, for all my text messages, okay? At the national level, they seem to be going crazy with that kind of stuff, and I don't want to be part of that.
I think that's a great point to make as well, and while it's maybe slightly off topic, to reiterate to the public as well, that anything that you are sending us in these capacities, our official emails, if you have found our unofficial or personal email addresses, our Facebooks, do know, those become FOI-able as well. So, you know, a little consideration of knowing that the information you're sending us could be, you know, published, just something to keep in mind when writing.
You're right, Ashley. Mr. Rutledge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, you know, echoing some of the comments made, you know, earlier by Tim, by Tina, you know, from the beginning of this, when it was brought up to the Policy Committee, I mean, I was a staunch advocate for this. I think it's incredibly necessary, and, you know, whether we may like it or not, you know, whether we're up at this dais or we're shopping at Stop &amp; Shop, we are members of the Board of Education, we are public officials, and, Tim, you're absolutely right, people don't see that dichotomy, you know? They don't necessarily separate us. I may be talking about a great, you know, night I had out on the town, so to speak, but people will see that as me talking as a Board of Ed person. And we, you know, we just have to be very mindful of that role, we have to be very careful, you know, about what we put out there. I sometimes agree with you, Tim, you know, it might be better if we just weren't on. Depends which, the coin went to heads or tails that day, but, you know, you know, we, you know, sometimes, yeah, it might actually be better if we weren't even out there, you know, on social media platforms, but that is what the world, you know, has, you know, become. Over, almost 70% of Enfield is on Facebook at this point, or, and that's not even counting other social media platforms out there. So, you know, just putting something out there for no other reason than to give the public confidence that we will be held accountable for stuff that we do online, I think even if that was the only benefit of this, I would be completely for this.
All right, hold on, just to clarify, he said Stop &amp; Shop, we got Shop Right, Big Y. I want to make sure we're not pointing out one.
I mean, no disrespect to any other grocery store in town.
Ms. LeBlake?
One of the things that I've always held close to my heart is that we're representing children and families, and how are we supposed to project, you know, that onto them if we ourselves are doing questionable things, or making questionable posts, or irate posts? I mean, it's really easy, we've all done it, we've all seen posts, and you start to type, and then you say, "I'm not going to answer this." And then you type it again, and then you say, "No, I'm not going to answer that." And then you're like, "I'm stepping away, because I'm not going to answer this," because it's hard not to get defensive and then shoot off an answer, too, because sometimes statements are very blanket in general, and you tend to take what we do very personally, you know? But I always, that's my first and foremost, that we're representing the children and families and the teachers of Enfield.
Mr. Neville?
You know, Tina makes a good point there, and, you know, and I get tempted, with my Irish, to jump back in on these things, too, but I don't, okay? And I don't use it because I don't know how. I don't use it because I don't think it's a good idea. And I've also had my, in the early years, I had my comments cut and pasted and posted out of context and other things, so I do not write anything. What I do if somebody calls, you know, emails me or whatever, I'll ask them, the only I'll do is say, "Send me your phone number, I'll give you a call." And I'll call them on the phone and discuss it, okay? I think, I agree with you and I don't agree with you in terms of, I think the public uses it, I think we have to choose when it's appropriate to use it and when it's not, because it'll stop us from being able to communicate. And so what I try to, I'm interested, just like all of us here, we want to communicate to people, but it works better for me if I pick up the phone and call them. Plus, I get both sides, I don't have to have this long, drawn-out thing, I don't have to get carpal tunnel typing here, and doing it, and I think people appreciate the call. But it also keeps us off, off the Facebook and having these things have an infinite life, okay? So I think we have to look at ways that we can avoid being part of this. And I think part of the thing with these, first of all, I think that we have to have some standards. I totally agree with that, but we also have to have some way to keep this, this stuff from developing a life of its own. And I think one of the big problems here is that the laws have not kept up with the technology, okay? That's why we're having a hard time with this, okay? And I, until they do, I think we have to be careful, like Tina was... Tina was saying, you know, you know, hold the fingers back here before you respond or make a phone call. It's a lot easier to do.
I think we've discussed it. You want, Mr. Rider?
I just wanted to say that the Policy Committee was asked for a policy. This is what the policy is.
Mm-hmm.
Per CAE. We can tweak it.
Yeah.
But this, this is what we were tasked to do, and we did. So-
I applaud you. I, I, I mean, this is just a healthy discussion, I think.
Yep.
Kathy Rollcall, please.
I'm accepting this, accepting this as the first reading.
First reading, yes. This is first reading.
What'd the edit?
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Well, they're going to edit it.
Yes. Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Rider?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Crisell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Longi, if you could please put this on the Enfield website as well, under Second Reading.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number 11, New Business. Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in January, I presented you with a draft of the 2018-19 school calendar. And per board policy, the board's required to adopt the policy in, in the month of February. So, if there aren't any additional questions, it's up to the board to take action. They deem appropriate to adopt the calendar either this meeting or the next meeting.
Motion approved by Ms. LeBlanc, seconded by Mr. DePoe. Any other discussion?
Can we add some snow days into this?
Well, we could start in August, why don't we? August 1st, the first day of school, is that okay? Mr. Rutledge?
I'm actually, yeah, just, just one question about the calendar, and this is kind of related to what Mr. Dreszek said earlier about snow days and the last day of school and things like that. If, if we accepted this in its current format, would this potentially have to be changed if we made the decision, for example, to cut from the 181 to the 180 days or anything like that?
This is next year's school calendar.
This is next year's calendar.
Oh, okay.
Adopt the following year's calendar and-
Gotcha.
Every February, we adopt next year's calendar.
Oh, wow. I just said that on record. Okay, thank you. [laughing] I'll try and keep it off social media.
Any other discussion? Ms. Riley?
Okay, so I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up, because a lot of people during election season that I walked around and talked with, and I know we're not going to change it this year, but maybe some food for thought about Veterans Day for being, now that it's a no-school day. People have suggested to keep it as either a half-day or a whole-day, but hold, like, programming, discussing veterans and, you know, what they've done and stuff. I don't know. That was just something that I would be remiss if I didn't bring it up.
If, if the board chooses to attend, have students attend on Veterans Day, state law would require that you reduce veterans' programming during that day.
That was just my only, because a lot of people brought it up, so I would be remiss if I didn't.
And just a point of order, I know some people got used to it, but the day before Thanksgiving is a school day. Just so, I don't know if, it's too early to say that, but-
It's an early release.
It was an early release, but it, but it's-
Accounts as a full school.
But it's not, but it's not a day off like it's been in the last two or three years.
It's just been the last two years.
Two years.
We had, the board had to institute that as a complete day off two years ago for the move of Enfield High School.
For the move of Enfield High, yes.
And it just, it remained, the numbers worked out, were remained for this school year. But they said that the last meeting, by having that as an off day, that basically pushes the last day of school, which is the 181st day, to the following week, which would be June 17th, as opposed to Friday the 14th. And again, that eliminates the potential for 10 overrun days for stuff.
Just wanted to clarify that, in case anyone's planning a vacation. So, all right, any other discussion? Kathy Rollcall, please.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Rider?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Crisell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we have to entertain, I need to entertain a motion to add an, add an item to new business.
To suspend the rules to add an item to the-
Yeah, the item to waive the 181 day for JFK only at this point.
A second.
Second, so, motion by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley. And we need to pass this with two-thirds vote. Do we need a roll call? Roll call on that, please.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Rider?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Crisell?
Yes. So, now I entertain a motion to-
Passes.
Approve the JFK, we are suspending the 181, 81st day of JFK only, it's grade six, seven, and eighth. So, they will end school on the same day as the rest of the district. So, motion by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley. Any discussion on that? I think we've discussed enough.
Do we get discounts on hats if we say yes?
And, and if we do approve it, if we do approve it, let's post it on the, their PTO page.
Yeah, can you put it on the PTO page?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Rider?
Agreed.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Crisell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, JFK will now, and everybody ends on the same day, not knowing what the last day is with, without Mr. Dreszek calling school, which I, I said earlier to him that we should, anything over 18 inches, that's what he should call school. Anyway.
Can we also get this put on the Enfield Public Schools page?
Yeah, I would just ask for an opportunity to talk to Mr. Sargalsky first, and he'll put something together for parents, and we'll get something on, on all of our mediums.
Okay.
Okay, so that concludes new business. Now, we got number 12, Board Committee, Board Committee Reports. Mr. Neville?
We're meeting on the 21st.
Okay. Ms. Riley?
We had a meeting yesterday, and it went well. And we have counts to approve.
Okay. Mr. Renier?
Yes, the Policy Committee met this month, and we finalized the 1,000 series. We are sending those to CAE for second review. And we'll be tackling the 2,000 series at this point. Our next meeting is March 6th.
Okay. Mr. Crisell, leadership met, and we discussed a few things. We'll leave it at that. And Joint Facilities met, and we're meeting again this Thursday, and we're proceeding with JFK. And I think Henry Barnard, we're looking, yeah, section of the room for Henry Barnard, so.
Point of order, when is the, what time is the Joint Facilities meeting?
Six o'clock, Enfield Room, Town Council, this Thursday. Enfield Building Committee hasn't met. They're supposed to meet on the 22nd. Any other committees? I don't believe we have any others.
There's an Enfield Suicide Prevention Committee, it's a quarterly meeting. It's tomorrow at 3:00 at the JFK Library.
Okay. Anybody wishing to attend, you, that would be a great. So, number 13, Approval of Minutes, Regular Meeting Minutes, January 23rd, 2018. So, moved by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Mr. DePoe. Any discussion? Show of hands, all in favor? Nine, oh, eight.
I'm abstaining, because I wasn't here.
One abstention. So, eight and one abstention, Ms. LeBlanc.
I don't think there were many, but there were like five or six that was there.
Yeah.
I watched it on YouTube, so I'm pretty confident.
Well, you can always, yeah. That's all right. We got eight, we're good.
So, I'm the heel that didn't watch it on YouTube. So, I have to abstain.
I think I had Alzheimer's here, though.
Continue. Number 14.
Council Payroll.
Approval of Council Payroll. Ms. Riley?
Yes. The Finance Committee met on February 12th, 2018, to review financial statements for the month of January year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of January, total expenditures amount to $6,6279.26, broken down between payroll totaling $3,842,073.74, and other accounts totaling $2,164,205.52. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Motion made by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion? Show of hands on this? Show of hands. All in favor? We have 9-0-0. Any line item transfers?
Nope, none.
None. Number 15, Correspondent Communications. And I did look towards your way last meeting, but you weren't there, so.
[laughing]
Number 16, Executive Session. Yes, we do have a reason to go to executive session. Moved, moved by Mr. Neville to go to the second, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion? Show of hands, all in favor? We are in executive session.
For matters related to personnel.
Yeah, matters related to personnel, and we will not be returning to TV. So, good night, everyone.